Meredith?
Meredith.
Oh, they're saying ready to go in.
Okay, well, I think it's now...
Hold on, Bruce, I don't know if we're live here or not.
Seven o'clock.
I got one minute before.
You've got one minute before? Okay, well, I was looking at the clock over there.
Do you want to set this up? It's one after, and that's the tag.
Okay, well, it's now seven o'clock, and since I'm assuming most of the people who are here for the public hearing will begin the public hearing at this point. I'm Bruce Colton, I'm chairman of the planning board, and this is Ken Taylor, Donald Holland, Walter Gunn, Heather LaPorte, the other members of the planning board. And obviously, as everyone, I think, is aware, the purpose of the public hearing is to go over a proposal to rezone property directly to the east of the Long Meadow Shops from residential, as it's currently zoned, to business. And I see Mr. Walker from the Long Meadow Shops is here.
Oh, can you speak louder, Bruce? Well, no, it's not microphone to them, it's on the television, but if you speak a little louder, I guess the gentleman in the back here can hear you.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, Mr. Walker from the Long Meadow Shops is here, as well as the architect of the plan. So at this point, I'm going to ask them to speak... Oh, I should also note that this is a public hearing for the rezoning of this parcel of land. This is not a site and design review of hearing for the property or the proposed construction on the property itself. That would be scheduled sometime after, assuming the zone change is approved at the upcoming town meeting. Subsequent to that, we would be scheduling a site and design review hearing to deal with the issues presented by the proposed construction. And that would also deal with, in addition to the proposed construction, it would also deal with traffic flow and other associated issues. But the only thing that the board will be voting on tonight, and the only thing that the town will be voting on in February, is whether or not to rezone the property from residential to business. So however, having said that, there obviously is interest in why the property owners want to rezone it, so obviously, there will be some discussion of what's being proposed to... what they're proposing to do with the property. But at that point, or at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Steve Walker from the Long Meadow Shops. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. We just celebrated 20 years of ownership at the Long Meadow Shops, and, you know, we really love being part of this community, you know? And being part of Long Meadow means giving back to the community, and we've supported, you know, countless organizations through our 20 years, and we think we have a very strong track record through the community. For the past seven months, I think we've known that we've met with town officials, we met with this board, the select board, residents, neighbors, and others to solicit feedback to finalize a plan that we feel is sensible in size and scope, and that we feel is a win-win for our customers, retailers, and the town of Long Meadow. One thing that, when we went to that meeting, I got an email from a local doctor after the town meeting, and something that I would have never thought about unless you were maybe in the medical field, and I'd just like to take a time to read this. It says, "I'm writing to present reasons to pass a plan to expand and enhance the Long Meadow Shops. The issue of the CVS Pharmacy drive-through in Long Meadow touches on safety levels, which have not been discussed at original presentation. Especially at this time of year, the presence of very ill customers inside the pharmacy is a clear source of the spread of disease. As a physician in this community, it makes more sense to have a drive-through pharmacy in the town where germs would be limited by patients not having to step into the store to pick up their prescriptions. All surrounding towns have this option in our area. Parents and infants with young children love the opportunity not to have to unbuckle their children from their seats, pull out the stroller, and wait in line for sick folks just to pick up a refill. I wish we had a drive-through when my four kids were little." Finally, folks, with assisted devices such as canes and walkers, who are still able to drive, are often at a loss to manage parking, walking through a store with fast-moving people, and waiting in line when a drive-through could simplify their day. I encourage our residents to rethink this issue and vote in favor of the Long Meadow Shops expansion. Mark Jakowitz, MD, Long Meadow. So this came, you know, I would never have thought of not being a physician, but, you know, it makes perfect sense. You've got sick people going in there, they're coughing, they're at the cash register, you come in there next, and you get that. So at this point, I've got Matt Whitmar here from Phase Zero Design, would like to turn over the floor to Matt.
Thank you. Thank you. So as many of you know, the shops at Long Meadow is a lifestyle center. That's defined as a cluster of mom-and-pop stores, as well as national brands, that creates a centralized shopping area with a strong mix of retail and restaurant. Grove Properties, as Steve Walker mentioned, purchased the property about 20 years ago. During that time, they've been working very hard to reinvigorate and improve the shops, and they've had a lot of success, bringing in some top-quality tenants such as Starbucks, The Gap, Max Burger, which all complement the existing tenants and strengthen the tenant mix. Recently, a number of leading national tenants, similar in quality to that of, say, a Pottery Barn or a Williams-Sonoma, have reached out to Grove Properties, expressing their desire to be in western Massachusetts, and specifically in Long Meadow. The issue, however, is there's not enough space within the existing center to accommodate these new tenants. Grove Properties quickly realized that if they did not do something proactive, certainly another developer may come along and decide to create a similar property, a lifestyle center, say, in western Springfield or in Agawam, and build that around these national tenants. What can happen in that case, which is something that happens all too often in the retail scenario, is that this will begin to pull tenants away from the shops. Maybe the new center has... is closer to the highway, or maybe it has some other advantage that attracts these tenants, but typically, we see that, we see tenant flight quite a bit. So really, this was a protective move, or started as a protective move on Grove Properties' part, to try to accommodate these national brands. So with the project beginning as an effort to find more retail space within the existing center, it quickly morphed into an opportunity to deal with some issues and correct some of the shopping center's access and parking issues, and some of the pedestrian safety issues. Regardless of what options we looked at, what designs we followed, each one had an element in common, and that was the need to expand the site to look to accommodate these improvements. Now, the area to the east of the shops, which I have on the screen here, is approximately 1.8 acres, 1.82 acres, and it's an area between the First Church of Christ, located right here with their parking area, and the shops itself in this area. This 1.82 acres is currently zoned A1 residential. It is owned by Grove Properties, it is contiguous to the shopping center, it is part of their existing parcel, and to address these improvements, Grove Properties is formally requesting that this area, this 1.8 acres, be rezoned to business. Now, the proposal before you this evening is its simplest form, is a zone change request. However, there's a strong desire on the part of Grove Properties to show what improvements they anticipate. And these plans I'm going to show you tonight are a work in progress, and we fully understand and anticipate a lengthy review and approval process is going to follow, which is going to include things like traffic studies and drainage calculations, and certainly incorporate comments from the town boards and committees that oversee site plan and building design. But I'll show you from the photo above, the site here from the outset lends itself quite well to a commercial or business use. There's actually a berm behind here in the grating. It actually rises up about 20 feet and then back down about 20 feet, where these residential homes are in the back. This is an area that we'd like to maintain. We're going to plant this out with landscaping, we're going to put a fence up to create this... create a lush barrier between the existing parcel and the residents in the back. You won't be able to see the residents from the street, from Williams here, as you do now, or rather, as you can't now, and they won't be able to see the shops, the new development that's being proposed here. You also see that there remains a significant green space in this area between the 1.82 acres and the parking lot of the church over here, and that certainly, at this point, is being maintained. And one of the most significant improvements in the current design, and I'll bring this on over here to the next slide, affects the parking lot and the access. And I'll flip through this proposed slide that you see here in the existing conditions as we go through this. Now, one of the things that we've heard a lot of comments about are the dead-end parking rows in this area and in this area of the shops, which means that a vehicle looking for a space will come down here, if they're trying to find a space, if all these spaces are taken, they then have to back out again, and then go to the next space, and do the same movement over and over again. In the proposed redesign here, you can see, we've created a much more linear, intuitive parking field that circulated around the parking spaces. Same thing with this area over here, again, and again over here. The main entrance off of Bliss has been enlarged, which is this entrance right here, and a dedicated left-turn and right-turn lane has been created, so that if a vehicle is coming in to make a left turn, and they can't do that, they're not going to back traffic up onto Williams Street and Bliss Road right now. On the other entrances, which you'll see over here, we're eliminating the parking spaces that actually exit, or are actually back into the entry aisles. So these spaces here and these spaces here have been eliminated, and instead, we've created a dedicated access drive, both in this location and in this location, which avoids a vehicle having to back out of a space into an oncoming car that might be coming in to the center through one of these access points. Additional parking spaces have been provided throughout the complex for a total gain of 139 spaces, and on the west end, we're continuing to accommodate extra space for the farmer's market, as well as parents' parking to use the athletic fields. Now, I'll also add that this achieves 100% compliance for the town's parking requirements, whereas the existing parking situation that we had before actually required a variance, because it only supports compliance at 93% of the town's required parking. Now, to allow for these improvements, we anticipate relocating CVS, which is currently in this area, over to this new area, which will be a larger store, and will include a drive-through pharmacy. Now, CVS is a destination retailer, and so a significant number of vehicles enter the center just to shop at CVS. By relocating this to the eastern portion of the site and providing a dedicated entrance off of Williams Street, which is this slipway right here, off of Williams Street, into this dedicated parking field, we're eliminating the short in-and-out trip traffic, so that this no longer interferes with access and parking within the center. The dedicated parking field is provided at the entrance to CVS, as well as the fact that this new slipway aligns directly with the drive-through lane, which will be behind the building. So as you come in through the slipway, enter the drive-through, and then exit out through the site. These changes are supported by CVS Corporate, who also supports the needs of mothers with infants and small children, the elderly, as Steve Walker also mentioned, it helps in eliminating the spread of infectious disease, and historic data shows that 25%, or at least 25% of shoppers, will use a drive-through rather than park and enter the store. Now, that's data people have asked us about, saying that, boy, it seems like a small amount, but these are shoppers that would come in, that, say, wouldn't be buying toothpaste or batteries, they would be going just to pick up pharmaceuticals at the drive-in. The study we looked at said at least 25%, so there, in fact, may be more, depending on the geographic area, but for the point of what the study said and the point of what we're saying tonight, it would be at least 25%. Couple of good questions, I thought, came up at the meeting on Monday night in terms of parking. So I wanted to try to respond to that a little bit, so I created this very complex and complicated drawing, so bear with me if you will. It's not showing as well on this screen, but basically, it's an overlay of the existing parking field with the proposed, that's there, with the proposal we're proposing this evening. So the existing parking field is in red. A lot of the questions that came up had to center around how, in fact, are you able to gain parking when you're putting your new building on your existing parking, which is right here? And that's true, there is certainly a loss in parking based on the existing parking field. The benefit is that we are creating all this new parking over here, new parking in this area. When we actually add this new parking in, in this area alone, we're seeing a gain of 63 spaces. When we revise the parking in this area to a more intuitive parking layout, we're seeing a gain of seven spaces. We have 137 additional spaces, I'm sorry, 34 additional spaces down here, and a net gain of 31 spaces in this area. And a lot of this is done through optimizing the parking field. Keep in mind, I think the last time that this parking area was worked on was back in the 1970s, that's about 45 years ago. A lot has happened in 45 years in terms of parking, parking optimization, coming up with an intuitive plan. We also had a question about whether or not we were providing compact spaces, which was allowing us to see these gains. The parking layout that we have here utilizes nine-by-18 spaces, which is mass DOT regs, as well as 20-foot drive aisles. We're not using any compact spaces to accommodate this, and we're also putting in the recommended number, or the required number of accessible spaces as well for the handicap. This is a quick drawing here, which, again, isn't showing up as well as I would like, but it does show some of the dimensions between our face of building to the church. So we're about 338 feet away from the building of the First Church of Christ, and the parking lots, there is about 150 feet between lot to lot on the plan that's being proposed. Our proposal also includes improvements for pedestrian access at the shops, a lot of pedestrian safety we're looking to implement into this proposed plan, which is included as far as additional sidewalks being provided, better signage for wayfinding, more bike racks and benches, and more pedestrian crosswalks located throughout the complex. Now, these crosswalks include two different types of crosswalks. One is what you would typically find, and I believe is there now, which is striped paint on pavement that designates the crosswalk area. The other type of crosswalk that we're going to implement, or looking to implement, is a raised crosswalk, and we're looking at locating these at areas where there's a decision point for a vehicle. So for instance, in this area where a vehicle might be turning out after using the drive-through, in this area where your vehicle is turning through this S-curve, as well as at every entrance leading into the center, to allow the sidewalk to be continuous. Now, these raised crosswalks allow pedestrians to cross the street at the same level of the sidewalk. I have some examples here to show you. So basically, whereas in what would happen typically, a pedestrian would walk, basically step down into the level of the pavement and then cross, in this case, the sidewalk level is continuous, and it's the vehicle itself that has to rise up, go over the sidewalk area, and then back down. So in a way, it's like an elongated speed bump. It's basically a device that's used as a traffic calming device. It's certainly used in shopping centers and campuses across the country, and it's something that we would imagine would be used successfully here with the desired effect. I'll also talk a little bit about the architectural character of the building. What we're proposing is very much in keeping with what's there now, the existing retail center. We're going to be using light colors, light materials, light architectural features. You can see we're using brick in this design. We also have pilasters and columns, a lot of cornice line that looks very similar. The window sizes and how the windows are fenstrated is very similar to what's in the existing center. And the reason for doing this is so that everything looks as if it was built all at once. The scale will be similar, the design will be similar, and we think that's important, that this won't look like something that's been built, you know, 45, 50 years later. It would all look as if it was one and have the same character. So in closing, I'd just like to add the following points. If the proposals are approved and CVS moves into its new location, Grove Properties would look to find the strongest retail tenants available that fit the dynamic blend that the shops now have to offer. I think currently, it's 50%, 48% of tenants are what we would consider local, regional tenants versus national brands, and Grove Properties certainly is looking to maintain that strong dynamic tenant mix of local and regional and national. Also, I'd like to say, too, that there's certainly no intent to deviate from the plan that's being proposed to you tonight. We certainly look forward to working collaboratively with the town to move this forward, but this is certainly what we're looking to propose. Folks have come up to us and said, "Boy, why don't you just put a big restaurant there on the end?" We certainly can't do that. We have a parking field that won't support that. The parking that's required for restaurants is more than what's allowed for retail. We would have to go back to the town and try to get a variance if we were to try to do something like that. I mean, this is clearly an expansion plan that we're looking to provide to support retail. Finally, I'd like to add that I believe Grove Properties has done a significant effort in providing information about the project on their webpage and direct mailings, as well as going door-to-door to talk to neighbors. And as a result of that positive dialogue, a lot of the feedback we receive from citizens has made it into these plans. We're certainly very excited about the proposal. We think it makes good economic sense, bringing in $70,000 to $80,000 potentially in new tax revenue, as well as we believe it's going to make a positive impact on the community. So we certainly look forward to working with you folks to move the project forward. Thank you.
Okay, well, at this point, I'm going to allow the planning board to ask any questions that they have, though I would just, I guess, lead off by saying I note that you've made... you've continued to tweak the proposal since the last time you were in front of the planning board, and I congratulate you on that. Does anyone on the planning board have any questions? Yes?
First off, I feel that you've addressed many of the concerns that were raised at the town meeting and initial concerns by the planning board, specifically the parking. I think you're to be commended in what you've come up with. There are some concerns that I think not only the rest of the people in Long Meadow, but also myself would have with, as changes would be needed, as you see that changes are needed, and let's say, too much of a traffic flow behind CVS to accommodate. This is a working plan, as you pointed out, and I think the point that we need to realize is, that's not what's going to be addressed tonight. What's going to be addressed tonight is, will the town vote for changing the residential section, the 1.6 acres, to business? And then, as Mr. Colton so aptly put it, if the town votes to do so, then there will be a detailed site review where not only what's been raised tonight, but additional aspects will be dealt with, such as what happens with as kids go by on their bikes to go to Blueberry School. But that's not what's to be addressed tonight, and I commend you for what you've done for tonight, answered a lot of our questions, so thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments by Ford?
Hold on, yeah. Oh, sorry. Okay. Just a rehash of our last planning board hearing on this matter in October. I always... thank you, Don, you already prefaced that. Tonight's hearing, the February 3 special town meeting, is really about a zoning change, and I think you remember what I said at town meeting, was that a zoning change is forever. It's like divorce. So with that in mind, what we have to think of tonight is that Mr. Walker and his company is proposing something that is workable, that he will do, and that's something, if the town approves it, the planning board can work with Mr. Walker and make it amenable for the whole town. I just want to clarify once again, you guys, you do not have a letter of intent from CVS at this point.
We do not, Walter. We've talked to them, they're extremely interested. For us to build this, you know, financially, it needs to be a CVS.
So again, that's my only comments. I mean, I commend them, they've done an incredibly good job, I guess, to propose, or to promote this project with something that would be a site plan review, something we would do after the town voted on it. I've seen projects in South Hadley, or not, I'm sorry, in Hadley, North Hampton, there's ones where they take a parcel of land and the town literally votes on a future project, and sometimes it's nebulous, nobody knows really what is going to go on that site, and it becomes very contentious, and in this case, I'm hoping and trusting that the proponents here are really going to do what they say is here, because, again, the zoning change is the business. You'll never go back to residential again, they will not return to farmland if everything goes wrong, so that's the trust factor everybody has to have here, and that's what the voters will decide, if they believe this is the right thing for Long Meadow or not. But I will assure you that, as I said again at town meeting, the planning board will run you through the wringer. We've done it before, we've done incredible things to the community market up on Long Meadow Street, we turned the whole building around, right, Bruce?
Yes. The building that's after...
Only after the community market, yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, it's still, I mean, people were upset with it, there were still issues with lighting and stuff, but there's only so much you can do. But again, you know, if it does go forward, I will assure the public that, you know, I think this board is competent enough to recruit experts to work with us and to see that the project goes forward successfully. And if it does not pass a town meeting, well, it remains an empty lot, and maybe build a house on it. That's where I stand in my comments.
Okay, do you have any... Okay, well, at this point, I will throw the meeting open to questions from the public. I guess I would note that the questions should be addressed to the planning board, and we'll forward that, sort of, to the petitioners, just so we don't get into sort of like a back-and-forth with the petitioners. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes?
Could you please come up?
Yeah, why don't you guys...
Yeah.
And also, I guess, please state your name and address before you speak.
Jane, I'm on Street 87, Edgewood Avenue. How many questions am I allowed?
Well, as many as you want.
Okay, first question. If the town votes no in February, how many times can Grove Properties bring that petition to change the zone back to the board, planning board? How many years in between, and how many times can they do it?
It, well...
Because I have different answers on this, and nobody was sure.
Okay, well, the issue, well, if the planning board votes to endorse...
Approve it, right, right. If we get to February 3rd.
Well, okay, well, if the planning board votes to endorse the change, and then the town meeting rejects it, and I know it would require a two-thirds vote at the town meeting, because the board had voted in favor of the proposed change, there would be no restrictions on when it could be brought back again, although, depending on what the vote was, I don't know if the petitioner would choose to bring it back, but legally, there's no restrictions on them bringing it back.
Not one year.
If the planning board had voted against, or not to recommend, the zone change, and if it were defeated at town meeting, then there would be a two-year period before it could be brought back to the town meeting.
Okay, so if you say no...
That's under state law.
Okay, so if you say no, they can come back in two years. If we say no, they can come back as much as they want?
Well, legally, yeah. Well, legally, yes, although, again, they're not idiots.
Never know. I'm not calling them idiots. I'm just saying for purposes. All right. I don't know if you can even answer this second question unless you talk to the Grove people. Why does it have to be a CVS?
Well, it doesn't have to be a CVS.
And why does it have to be a drive-thru with the same question?
Well, I, again, Grove Property may want to answer that. My understanding, and if Mr. Walker wants to address it, he can come up and address it. My understanding is that CVS indicated they wanted to have a larger store with a drive-thru because I guess most of their newer stores are designed that way. But again, there's no, at least in terms of what we're voting on tonight, it has nothing to do with the tenants. And for that matter, even through site and design review, it would be the building that traffic flow would be approving. I mean, if, I don't know, if CVS changed their mind and Walgreens wanted to move in.
All right, I just don't understand. Everything has been CVS, CVS and drive-thru.
Well, I believe that. Again, I don't know if Mr. Walker wants to address that.
I think I will. Bruce, I see it as a, it's a model. This is what their business model is. Now, again, CVS might not follow through. CVS might decide to come up with a totally new plan. I mean, they're a business. They could have a bad fiscal quarter and then decide to completely pull out of Long Meadow, for all we know. But that's their hope, that it seems to work with them. They've had favorable comments with CVS and that this drive-thru thing seems to be popular. But like I said, again, this is a zoning change, and you're right, it could be a Walgreens, it might be nothing, it might be two retail stores.
And one last question. Will the bank, I don't know, because I don't use the banks up there anymore, will the bank, if it's still in business, Bank of Boston, you know, Bank of America, what's up there, would they have a drive-thru for the bank and a drive-thru for proposed property on the same end?
I don't believe there's any proposal to change.
So, you have three drive-throughs in this lot? That's what I'm just trying to find out.
Yeah, it's a drive-thru.
Two banks and another store.
It's not really a drive-thru. Whereas the, I think the CVS will actually be where you talk to a customer representative.
Okay, but there'd be three drive-throughs, whether it be an ATM or a person.
At the same, yes.
Okay, I have no more questions. That was it.
Okay.
Thank you very much for talking.
No problem. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Yes? Okay, please come to the mic. You'll be next. And again, just state your name and address before you begin.
My name is Jim Moran, and I live at 48 Avondale Road, and I'd just like to make some comments about the project. Now, I've watched probably three, this is the third presentation I've seen, you know, from Long Meadow Shops tonight. The most recent one was Monday at the Select Board, and I think the, you know, Grove Properties has done a great job of explaining the project probably a lot ahead of the game in terms of what we're talking about tonight. Tonight is really the zoning change and not the site and design review. I feel I understand the project in terms of its intent pretty well and its objectives as well. And I believe one of the key safety issues, safety and parking in the Long Meadow Shops, which has always been a nightmare over there, particularly during Christmas season, has been very well addressed, I think, comments to that, and, you know, the proposal is pretty good. However, given the size of this project, I'm guessing there's going to be a significant increase in traffic flow from outside our town to the Long Meadow Shops if they're successful in terms of attracting new business, you know, if this zoning change and expansion is improved. So, the one concern that I have, one major concern I have is not being well addressed. It involves the increase in overall traffic flow, both in the immediate area of the Long Meadow Shops as well as other streets in our town. At certain times of the day, particularly morning and mid-late afternoon, the major streets in Long Meadow, Long Meadow Street, Converse Street, Williams Street, even Maple Road, if you've traveled on those streets at that time of the day, they get very busy. There are backups even on Williams Street coming to Redfern, Frank Smith. Long Meadow streets can be, you know, highly dependent upon what's happening on Interstate 91. And in recent years, Long Meadow has been experiencing a significant increase in drive-thru traffic. People living in East Long Meadow obviously go down Converse Street and going out, going into Springfield, whether it's Enfield or other surrounding towns. And I think it impacts traffic on all of our residential streets. The Select Board has recently considered the closing of Quinnettuck Road because of increased traffic vehicle, increased vehicle traffic. And the fact that this street is now being used as a shortcut, you know, causes a lot of consternation for people who live on that street. It's been an issue for quite some time. And as our major streets experience increased traffic volume, the same pattern will continue to propagate throughout the town. You see it in the north end of town when people are waiting on Forest Lynn Road to go out of town. They take the cross streets to try to avoid the lines of traffic. The planning board knows that there are two other major projects that are currently underway that will significantly impact traffic on our already congested major roads. The MGM Casino and the large apartment complex that's currently being built right now on Shaker Road on Mayfield Drive in Enfield. This project consists of 340 new apartments that are going to be built over the next two years, and construction's already been started. If you drive down there, they're already building the apartments. Now, while Long Meadow will receive significant money as a surrounding community to mitigate the expected traffic, we've got a check for $850,000 already. That's to mitigate the traffic, that's not to make it go away with its traffic lights. I think Steven Crane said it's going to cost us $200,000 just at Converse Street intersection to resolve the issues there, to get an upgraded traffic system to help the flow of traffic. But that doesn't reduce the number of cars, it just makes it flow a lot better, not with the backups. The larger apartment complex being built off of Mayfield Drive is also going to cause some problems. There's, you know, 340 apartments going to generate car traffic into Long Meadow. It's not something we can do much about. I know there was concern by people who lived on Maple Road, and we really weren't given much latitude or even opportunity to influence the size and scope of that project. So, that's going to influence the amount of traffic on our streets. I do agree that the Long Meadow Shops has, for many years, provided a great service and resource to our town. However, one of the main reasons, many reasons that my family and I lived in Long Meadow, have lived in Long Meadow for 35 years and pay its high property taxes, is the low amount of traffic we have on our streets. And, you know, I don't want to see bumper-to-bumper traffic that's experienced in many other surrounding towns, and it appears that this might be happening to Long Meadow with all these things that are happening in not the very distant future. At the February 3 special town meeting, voters will have the chance, a second chance, to decide whether or not they want to allow this proposed zoning change and expansion. If the February 3 special town meeting again decides to reject the zoning change, I just heard a little while ago, we can get a situation like the fluoridation issue. Every time we have, we get 200 voters, put it on the petition, we'll vote again and again and again. I believe that Massachusetts General Law allows the petition to come again through that citizen petition, unless the planning board submits a negative recommendation tonight in the zone change, that's what's going to happen. All right? I'm asking the planning board either not to issue a positive recommendation, I don't know if that's possible, and let the special town meeting decide, you know, once and for all, it's a second time we're going there, let them decide. You know, the people of our town can, you know, get some influence on what's going to happen in our town in terms of traffic. And the delay of two years will at least let us better understand the full impact of the MGM Casino project, which we really don't know, and also this Mayfield Drive project, and, you know, that effect on the traffic flow in our town. So, I'd like to put that up on the table for consideration by the planning board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to express my thoughts on this subject.
Margaret Rockus, 67, Shady Side Drive in Long Meadow.
My first question is, couldn't some of the traffic calming measures such as the elevated crosswalks be implemented at the entrances to the shops from Bliss Road right now for pedestrian safety?
Well, I would think that they could, except there'd be no way the town would have no control over that.
No, but I'm asking the representatives of the Long Meadow Shops if that couldn't be done sooner than waiting for this process.
I don't know if they want to address that or not.
I mean, that is a primary route for children going to Williams Middle School, Blueberry Primary School, and the high school, has been for quite a while.
Do you want to address that or?
Isn't the Safe Roads program in Massachusetts supposed to address all that? It's not, if I recall, the Safe Roads program is what's supposed to direct and determine what are safe paths for children to travel, and Safe Roads would identify if that was an issue. If you recall, that's a, the governor, Deval Patrick, came up with this program. It's, there's been grants and money for this. We actually, at one point, Mike Kirby, I believe, was our safety officer, and Safe Roads started when my daughter was at Wool Swamp School. And that's the kind of programs where the state works with the town, with Public Safety Committee, to actually determine what's safe and not safe. Actually, they can dictate probably to Long Meadow Shops, if it was, there's an incident or something was to come up, they could actually discuss that. But, I mean, I don't know to what extent this goes, but personally, I don't think the property owners are responsible for that.
Well, I mean, not legally, perhaps. I mean, if I hit a child.
Morally, yes. Ethically, but I think, you know, they've recognized that this is a big jump. I mean, why not, you know, take the whole cake and eat it? I mean, that's what they want to do. They want to, they're not only going to expand, which is profitable for them, obviously, they want to also make improvements and make it palatable to us. And again, back to the whole point of this thing, it's, again, site and design versus a zoning change. We're talking ton about zoning change. This is stuff that you'll come to our meeting, if this thing is approved for zoning change, you'll come here, and we will take you very seriously and make sure that these things are implemented.
Well, it's like you say, with trust and hope and trust, okay? Once that's voted, and so my question is, yes, I know they're not legally liable, and it's very nice of you to jump in for them and explain the Safe Roads program, but if they're willing to do this when they get the zoning change, I just wondered if they would be willing to do it in April or May?
I don't know. So, that's a question they need to answer.
Well, I don't know if you've heard the question, but.
Yeah. Sure, go ahead. Hi.
Again, for the record, I'm Matt Whitmer from Fazer Design, and, you know, to respond to that, and this did come up at the meeting on Monday night, you know, one of the things that we're dealing with is a domino effect of being able to expand, giving us some more space to move some traffic around and then move some parking spaces around, and then be able to adjust and optimize towards what's going on in the west end of the site. We're actually doing a significant amount, which isn't necessarily shown on these drawings, without relocating the entrances and how we're actually tweaking them. The entrance on the west end, for instance, is completely changed as far as its location, and the main entrance off of Bliss Road where we're putting the left and right turn in is also being completely configured. So, you know, part of it is, do you do this piecemeal? Do you do a little bit now? Do you do something in April? You know, it's possible, it doesn't really make sense at this point. I mean, we would really like to look at this holistically and go through and do everything at once. I mean, financially, it makes sense. I think it's more appropriate because of the time now, we give the opportunity for the planning board and for citizens to respond to these items to make sure that this is, in fact, what people want, rather than coming in and doing a little bit here and a little bit there and finding out, in fact, something really didn't solve an issue or something created more of an issue later on. So, I think it's the appropriate move to do, is to do this holistically and do this through the process and meet with the planning board as well as with you folks and hear everything and then be able to react. And again, it's a plan that's a point in process, and we certainly intend to be back and working with you more.
I'd also note that assuming the zone change passes and it comes before the board for site and design review, we would certainly, the board would certainly be having independent traffic studies done. Also, to, I guess, in part address the previous gentleman's comments, the study, probably we'd be using the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, but whoever we were using would certainly be asked to take into account presumption that traffic would be expanding because of the apartments in Enfield and the casino in Springfield, so all of that would also be taken into account in terms of traffic flow on the streets and also traffic flow within the parking lot.
It's my understanding that the sidewalk along Bliss Road is supposed to be maintained by the Long Meadow Shops owner? Is that correct? In terms of ice and snow removal?
I believe, of course, yes, that is a town by law.
So, you know, it's all about hope and trust, and I do not doubt your sincerity for a moment, okay? But Sunday around 11:30 in the morning, I had to go to the Long Meadow Shops, and that's what the sidewalk looked like, okay? Now, the parking lot, as you can see, was cleared, okay? I'm happy to give you these, I've got plenty. If you look towards the first church, is that what it's called? Christian High.
Yes.
Okay, so if you look towards, okay, so, but if you look towards the church on the corner, they have cleared their sidewalks because you could still do that at that This is a picture of someone who certainly appeared to me to be older than I am, walking along Bliss Road because the sidewalks in front were not cleared at 11:30 in the morning, Monday morning, about 7:45, I stopped back just to see, did they clear them later in the day? No, it was an ice sheet, okay? Total ice sheet. Layer there from the ice. Now, the reason why it was on my radar to take these pictures.
Did you call the Long Meadow Shops?
The reason.
Did you call the Long Meadow Shops in the 8:01?
No, it was Sunday. Who do I call? Who do I call? Okay? Monday morning, it was an ice sheet. The reason why this was on my radar in the first place was because over the last snow development we had, which I think was around Thanksgiving, I noticed the problem. I didn't have my phone with me, I didn't take any pictures, but I thought, gee, if I was going to the town to ask them to grant me an expansion, you know, to take residential property, turn it to commercial, I'd be watching my Ps and Qs. I'd be dotting my Is and crossing my Ts, and I would have somebody making sure that this kind of thing didn't happen. So, when you talk about hope and trust, okay, it works both ways. And I agree with Mr. Moran about the traffic study. I do agree with your points, the traffic is going to absolutely increase. I've heard in the Springfield paper, J.Crew, 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 well, we'd be the destination shopping point for J.Crew from people from Greenfield and Southern Vermont on down, which, you know, I'm not against growth, I'm not against making money, but I am against doing things without looking before we leap. I wonder why we could not have a traffic study done prior to the zoning change? Because I think that would, you know, when I was at town meeting in November and the issue of the kids and safety and all that came up, someone at the front who was associated with the planning board, and I do not remember who it was, said, "Well, gee, you know, when Walgreens or Rite Aid moved into East Long Meadow, they redid the traffic, they got them to redo the traffic lights so that problem on Main Street or Maple Street wasn't a problem anymore. Maybe we could get them to do something like that for us, like pay for crossing guards." Okay? So, this is all trying to backfill after you've already said you can have it zoned your way. You can have your Big Mac your way. You can have it zoned commercial. You know, I understand there's site review, I understand we can be demanding, but at the end of the day, that property's gone commercial before we know all the facts of what that's going to affect. And, you know, I just don't think that's the right way to do things. And I don't think this is the right way to do things either. You know, those kids walk on those sidewalks. My daughter in the high school has a hard time crossing the street in the afternoon. Drivers will not stop. I understand this isn't about that, but this is about voting for more traffic. That's why there's more parking places. So, I'm. So I'm all for growth, although I think that adding .13% to the budget with the additional shops, at least the current budget, is, you know, what do we -- what's the payback for that? .13%? And what's the downside? Because if it was 13% or maybe even 1.3%, it might be worth more disadvantages. So thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any -- yes?
She got you on the snow removal.
Apparently.
Rose Sullivan on that 144 Vicant Road. And I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. But I'm in your little bus there, as well as Mr. Moran. Vicant Road, for any of you who don't know where it is, it's right off of Williams Street, directly across from the football field. And I've lived there for over 50 years. And contrary to what was said at town meeting, the shops have not been there for 60 years. They're for 50, what have you, years? About 50 years.
I think they went in around 64.
Because I was in third or fourth grade when they went in.
Yeah, no, it's right, more like 50 years.
Well, needless to say, just to reiterate what Mr. Moran had said and this nice lady had said, it's a flipping free-for-all up this street. Somebody who walks around town all the time with my neighbor, this is a very, very dangerous area. And with as many schools as there are in the area, and the most caution to be taken in that area is for the high school, is really something. There are signs that blink for 20 miles per hour for the high school, and the school is in session. But meanwhile, the signs up by the shops where the most congestion is, and the cars are zipping like they're on an amusement ride, and they are. They don't slow down. They get behind the Big Y, and they're zigging and zagging and crossing, and everybody's trying to beat one another. And anybody who's coming from East Long Meadow, they go behind the Big Y there, they're not going to turn around and go that way. So they got to cross because they're heading Williams. And the ones coming from Bliss, I mean, you're taking your chances there. And as far as walking there, you can't cross the street. Nobody's doing 35 miles an hour. I've got news for you. They're not. And, you know, this isn't your problem.
No.
It's not your problem. But it's all related.
No, but they should--
It's only going to get worse.
But they should fix it.
And so this needs to be slowed down.
Yeah, you're right.
And when you stop and think that how many traffic lights there are in this town and where there is the most activity, there aren't. You've got one at Laurel Street, and then one at Redfern, and nothing in between. Nothing in between. It doesn't make sense. You've got 18-wheelers making deliveries at the Big Y, and you're trying to get out of the driveway at the Big Y, and you can't see past in order to get out. And it's crazy up there. It's absolutely crazy. Not to mention cars that are cutting across--
Excuse me. You should only see those trucks early morning and late night. They're never supposed to be there during the day.
Oh, they're there.
They are.
Oh, yes, they are.
That's when you call the town manager.
No, they're there during the day.
That was in their -- okay.
Yeah.
This is -- these are things that maybe our town is functionally not controlling. You know, you're bringing up all a bunch of points, really not blaming the Long Meadow Shops. You're blaming us as a town for not managing our own traffic problems.
But it's very dangerous. And, you know, with the sidewalk issue, that's been --
You're bringing up towns, town issues in general, not generally related to them.
The change issue, right, and her concern with safety. I guess her question, if I interpret it right, is how are you dealing with the safety issues that will arise? She's telling you what already there are safety issues, and they're going to get worse because of the increased traffic. And so she wants to know--
Because Mr. Walker has already addressed the safety issues at the shops. But let's talk about where the real danger is, and it's just going to escalate.
So the town is making the zoning change, and the adjacent spaces that the town controls have to also address the safety.
Exactly. And I'll remind you again, if you look at -- you can Google any planning board review of a zoning change and a residential commercial. Look at Cape Cod, for example. I've seen projects that were proposed for four and five businesses. When the planning board finished with them, they had one business. Steve knows that's a possible outcome here. You see that as three buildings. We might finish with one. That's the risk he wants, he has to take. Because we can't -- we can modify this thing, and he can eventually turn around and maybe sue us and the town. But if we really -- we're looking out for you, and you, and you. We really -- I think the first thing the planning board sees is probably, or I do, is that he has sort of a right to use this as to develop it, okay? He owns a strip of land. It is something that's developable, whether it's going to be apartments. Smart growth is what the state would like to see. The state actually would mandate that. They would like to see that we have apartments upstairs and retail space downstairs. So something would eventually happen here. The thing is, is the intensity. And I am not -- I'm skeptical, as much as you are, right now. I'm not certain this over-intensifies the use of this project. But that's what I think our board does, and that's where you bring in traffic consultants, and you bring in good ones, and they pay for them. We can pick anybody we want. We can pick the top one in Washington, D.C., and bring him in here, and Steve Walker is going to foot the bill.
So to her question, do we have to approve the zoning change first before that happens?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, you know, I mean, he has gone well beyond--
That was her point, right?
Right.
She would like--
He's convincing you that this is something plausible. He's going -- the Long Meadow Shops is going well beyond what they need to do legally. But I mean, obviously, they know we're smart in town. I mean, we went through the whole thing with Press Blake back in the '80s. And Press was very, I would say, flagrant. He was obnoxious, and the town said no to his changes. And it went over and over again. So, you know, the Long Meadow Shops knows we're a very smart group of people in town, and, you know, he's going to have to work with us. And everything you say here tonight, everybody's every saying, and believe me, we're taking this very seriously.
Does the zoning change, Walter, just end there, or will that go directly out to Redfern?
No.
I would never -- I'll tell you right now, as long as I'm an elected official, I will never support--
So that's where the red line is?
-- any zoning change to commercial--
So what remains where the Christian Science Church is? That will remain--
No. Because here's the thing, a way--
Not that the church remains, but that will remain, I guess, residential.
What's odd here is that we like blocks of land. Now, if you remember, Roy Johansson was a member of our board, and Roy was made a very clear point, and that was, if you look at where Armadas is on Shaker Road and Maple Road, we like blocks, okay? We don't want to see like a cancer where things start to expand out and start to be in front of houses. The problem with this shop, which is something the voters should look at, is that a house snuck in where a house shouldn't have been, is now on Williams Street.
Oh, yeah.
But we like to keep it blocked in. That way, you can control the traffic. You flow it in properly. You don't want -- like in the old days, there was a meat market over off of, between, oh, what is it, Bliss Road and, you know, over by Green Acre in that area. And then there was, you know, the over where Doctor, the spa on the green, you have those little businesses. Those are odd. But when you have a project like this, you really want to keep it square and contained. And I think it's going to be a very serious review of traffic. We don't know here. I mean, possibly, the scope of this project could generate more traffic turns than, say, the casino. And look, the casino just dished out $850,000 in what's going on here. So, I mean, he has a right to probably have the zoning change. I'm for it. I just don't think, you know, we don't know the intensity, the scope of the intensity yet. I think it really is going to be, again, there'll be a bunch of public hearings, and I think everybody here has made good points to the extent of, you know, how serious it is.
Can I just say that I went to the shops this morning, checked the sidewalks again, and they've been sanded. So I wanted to make clear there was a change from Monday.
Well, you know, they're liable. I mean, I'm a business owner in East Long Meadow, and I've gotten the memo. If you don't -- if somebody falls on your property, you can sue the daylights out of them. And I know right now, that must be a -- I mean, he should do that just there. His insurance carrier is not going to like him either. And that's not just being a good Samaritan. I mean, that's just common sense and also the law. And it is town law as well.
Did you -- yeah, Jerry.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Noel, and I live at 724 Frank Smith Road. And I've changed some of my remarks to the planning board, and I would continue to encourage you to support this project. That's -- I want to make sure that you understand that basis. But there is a, you know, I've heard about cleaning your sidewalk, and I think Bruce Colton always carries the bylaws with him. And to my understanding, that we don't plow our streets unless we get three inches of snow. And I guess if we don't plow the streets, then as an owner, I'm probably not subject to -- I'm probably subject to the same rule, although I do clean my sidewalk. But I think to blame the shops, I think we're way off the scan. We're way off scope here. And it's not the fault of the shops. But one of the things that the planning board, to all those that are listening, and I've always said that the important thing is, what are we going to decide at the legislative body at town meeting for the zoning change? There are three things that bring people at town meeting. One is the old leap law or the leash law for the dog leash, Proposition 2 and 1/2, or a zoning change. And we're all impressed with our zoning. We've got snob zoning in Long Meadow, and I've got a copy of our long-range plan here, which says, "Long Meadow loves being Long Meadow." We don't want big changes. This is a minuscule change to better service the community, to bring more revenue to the community. And it is a, since I've spent a little time on the planning board, a responsibility of the planning board to review the capital, the long-range plan, which includes about 85 action steps in the long-range plan. Several of those have to do with developing commercial properties to the best interest of the community. And this is what we're talking about. This is a jewel of our community. It's not perfect. And we heard tonight a lot about, and by the way, CVS, for our own reasoning, I guess, builds, has 1,700 CVS stores in North America. They bill 200 or 300 a year. So I think we're a hot spot. I think we're a good spot for Long Meadow, and I'm sure that they're chafing at the bit to get a drive-up CVS in Long Meadow. It will service not only the elderly, it will service that mother with two or three kids in the car, that she can't leave in the car because she might get arrested, to pick up medication for that family. Now, I guess one of the things that bothers me somewhat is that the Long Meadow Shops own the property. They pay taxes on that property, and they were denied the use of the property. And I'm for 2/3 majority vote for a zoning change. But they were denied the use of that property by one or two votes at town meeting. Somehow, it doesn't seem right. Just doesn't seem right. No. Mentioned a lot here about Long Meadow, traffic, traffic in Long Meadow. Did I hear someone say?
Yes, you had to recount.
Well, one or two, yeah. One or two counts. And hopefully, we're going to be able to correct that on February 3rd. And I would encourage everyone to attend the meeting.
Did you want to say something?
Jerry, please.
Jerry.
Thank you. I think I have the floor here.
Yes. The person -- I've asked people not to make comments from the--
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Long Meadow has become, in my term, a target traffic community. I live on Frank Smith Road. I've been there 30 years, and the traffic has tripled. And it's not on account of the shop. What we've got is Converse is heavily trafficked, East Long Meadow, Wilbraham, it's the Indian Path to 91. And I was, when I was on the board, I'd bring that to my counterparts, and they would laugh me out of the room because that is the Indian Path. What are you going to do about it? That hasn't changed. What has changed now is on Williams Street, where we've got East Long Meadow and Wilbraham using that street, Williams Street. I had an informal traffic study done and counted the number of cars that were driving by while I was standing in front of Starbucks. Out of the 15 or 20 cars that drove through, heading west towards 91, less than two drove into the parking lot to the shops. Less than two. Now, in addition to the east-west traffic flow from East Long Meadow and Wilbraham, we now have Enfield, which will double probably the flow of traffic. It's running north-south on Frank Smith Road, heading north on Frank Smith Road, again to Springfield or 91. So to blame the shops for additional traffic is disappointing. It's unfair. It's not right. We are a target community. It is a responsibility of the community, not the Long Meadow Shops, to solve, as I think Walter so rightly pointed out, that it is a community problem, and we need to address it. So again, I think you've heard a lot tonight, a lot, perhaps not as specific as you'd like to hear, dealing exactly with a zoning change. So I would encourage you. I know you. I know you because I've served with you, and you're going to do the right thing by supporting this project and bring it to town meeting. Thank you.
Are there any other-- Well, yes. You'll be next.
Go ahead.
Pardon.
Go ahead.
Since this has been broadcast by LCTV, if there are any comments from the residents, I ask that you go to the microphone because otherwise it's not going to be picked up by the people listening to the broadcast or when the broadcast is streamed online. Thank you.
Plus, the chair has to recognize those people as well.
My name is Mark Gold. I live at 129 Avondale Road, and I'm here to encourage the select board to, excuse me, encourage the planning commission to vote against recommending this project. And I know we've spoken a lot tonight that this is a zoning change hearing and not a site and design hearing, but they really are inexorably intertwined. You know, Mr. Gunn made a comment earlier that I thought was worthwhile, that perhaps it won't be this design. And I, my question would, you know, and it's not, it's a rhetorical question, but is, you know, if through the site and design, this came up that it's not going to be a 12,000 square foot CVS, would this even go through as a CVS because of the traffic? And in fact, my reasoning for asking you to vote against this is traffic and parking. When you do a more detailed study of this, and the question was asked again this evening, as it was asked Monday at the select board meeting, was, of the increase in parking spaces, you know, why aren't some of them being done now? And in fact, for the additional spaces that are being built, which is to the east end of that design, the one shown in yellow there, it shows 63 additional spaces. An analysis says that we currently have about .57 spaces per 100 square feet of retail space. The new design, as it will be, will be .60, an increase of, you know, small amount, from .57 to 60. But the new addition with those 63 spaces is .31. So we're actually adding half the number of, amount of parking per square foot of retail as we currently have. And I think most people will tell you, what we have isn't very appropriate. And so I understand we're not talking about site and design, but I don't understand how we, you know, and because that's the law and that's the process. But we really need to understand that, you know, if this, which is a well-thought-out, well-established, what they need to make this financially workable, isn't going to fit with what we believe and what you believe to be the safety of the town, it ought not be something we even get into because, as it was said at the beginning of this meeting, a zoning change is forever. a zoning change is forever. We may change the zone and not like the design, but then we've got the zoning change and we may get other things. A couple of other things I might point out is those parking spaces I talked about, there's going to be employees that come with those. So even some of those are taken up by employees. So even not all of those are available for, for the customers. There's clearly going to be an increase of traffic. I'm concerned about the differences we heard tonight about, it's a lifestyle destiny, it's a lifestyle shops or is it a destination shop? Because a lifestyle shop is for the convenience of the people in Long Meadow. It's something so we don't have to drive to the Holyoke Mall to get a prescription filled or to get a cup of coffee or something. But a destination shops is, we've got people coming from out of town to come there for a destination. And we can't have it both ways. If it's a lifestyle shop, in my opinion, what we've got is probably good. If it's a destination shop, then we ought to recognize it's a destination for what's going on. And I think the, the other reason I would ask that the, the planning commission vote to not recommend this is simply so that we can put it to bed once and for all, as was indicated at the answer to one of the questions. As long as the planning commission endorses this, it can come up over and over and over again. And that doesn't mean that it's not going to get its vote. It got its vote in, at the, at the fall town meeting. It's going to get a vote again on February 3rd, but let's let that be the last vote. And so with that, I thank you for your time.
I'll just respond in part, in terms of the, the traffic study, we have in our zoning bylaws, multi-page parking bylaw, which it's not simply a matter of, okay, the store is X number of square feet, you therefore need whatever, X number of parking spaces per square foot. It's far more sophisticated than that. It comes, I might also know from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, it includes employees in the, the figuring of what, how many spaces are needed. And it simply is not a matter of, okay, the shopping center is X number of square feet, therefore you need so-and-so parking space. Somebody, it might have been Steve Walker, but I'm not sure who, somebody mentioned earlier tonight that they couldn't put in a restaurant because there's no way they'd be able to meet the parking requirements for, for putting in a large restaurant at that end. The current shopping center does not meet the town's parking, parking space requirements, though it's legal because they were given a variance by the zoning board of appeals, what, you know, is pointed by the select board. The current proposal does meet the required number of parking spaces under the town's bylaw because they've added so many. I, I might note that the original plan that came in front of us was, I think, a couple hundred spaces shy of the required amount. And we pointed that out to them. They came back and they had added, I don't know, something like 37 more spaces. We pointed out that, well, that's a step in the right direction, but it's not really good enough. They came back and they added the, I guess whatever the total is they have now, which, which does meet 100% of the towns, and I might have, the towns are, in this case, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's criteria for how many spaces are, are needed. So simply saying, okay, there's, there's whatever, one space per X number of square feet now and it'll change to one space to X number of square feet in the future, isn't the criteria for using parking, or not for figuring out parking spaces. So, but anyway, just I just wanted to address that.
I understand that, that complexity. But we've also got parking spaces behind the building where there's no access to the building.
One of the problems is that the parking spaces aren't necessarily where, where you want to park to get into. I mean, you may want to get into, to the bank and maybe you have to park down there. I mean, the placement of the parking spaces is another issue, but, but, but I mean, they are, they are going from a, a current situation which doesn't meet, again, it's legal because they were given a variance by the ZBA, but that doesn't meet our criteria for parking spaces to a proposal that, that does meet our criteria.
But by their own design, they could probably achieve that without this addition, if, by whatever's going on, but don't need to and have chosen not to. I mean, I'm not saying they, they need to. I'm just pointing out, but I thank you, Mr. Gold.
Actually, I think I said that the gentleman in the back would be next.
Ralph Kaufman, 911, Williams Street, Long Meadow.
Could you wait till you get to the microphone, sir?
Ralph Kaufman, 911, Williams Street, Long Meadow. Before I came here, I called Mr. Blake to see if, in fact, he knew why the residence restriction was initially placed. I called the historical commission.
Excuse me, what did you mean by the, could you clarify?
In other words, why was it originally kept residence and then the business in the middle and the residence? And nobody seems to know that. Mr. Walker said he's been there 21 years. Nobody seems to know why they restricted it.
Well, it originally was all residential. It was changed to, to.
So why would they give the, the business just in the middle?
I would assume, obviously, this is before, long before I was on the planning board. I assume this is because that's where the, the petitioner back in the 60s wanted to build the shopping center.
I think the forefathers had the foresight that it's going to expand to restrict it at that time. Why would we go against their judgment when, you know, we've got everything we need in the shops? It's well-represented. The town treats them well. And that's not why the people in Long Meadow are here paying a premium tax.
Excuse me, it's my understanding, if you recall, Mr. Blake built the Christian Science Church. He owns that whole strip of land.
Correct.
So he chose what he chose. He probably wanted to buffer himself from the church to the property and not, had nothing to do with the town or a forefather's.
I couldn't ascertain that, I call.
He actually, and this actually is when I was on the planning board back in the 80s, Mr. Blake wanted to expand the shopping center. Then, at the time, the planning board and the town voted, well, the planning board voted to recommend against it and the town voted against it, but Mr. Blake actually wanted the shopping center.
Correct.
Where, where this proposal is.
And he took the piece that he could get. So my question is, the people here could live anywhere they want. They chose to live here and they represent and they spend their money in the local shop. I, I don't see any reason that the planning board says this is enough and this is enough.
Well, again, one of the reasons, perhaps, one of the reasons people live here is because it's a town that has an open town meeting and they can all come out and vote.
Yes. And we've done that twice. We've done that twice. I don't want you to like it.
Obviously, everyone in town is familiar with the Long Meadow shops because pretty much we all shop there and we, parts of it. And I mean, I don't think this is, it's not like this is some obscure corner of the town. Nobody really knows what it's about. And I mean, everyone, I, I think perhaps more than on, on many zone changes, will, will be showing up and presumably casting an informed vote on, on, on what they want or don't want.
I think the young ladies are very pretty and they spoke very eloquently. They said exactly what we want.
Wow, flatterer will get you everywhere.
You've got two selectmen here. And they, they vote, they say the same thing. And I guess my question is, why wouldn't we just lock it down if?
Well, the town certainly has that opportunity.
The poor soul that took the count was probably the most conscientious individual in the building and they put doubt in his mind and twice we voted. You know, I don't want to go over plowed ground, but.
No, I agree.
It is what it is and it was what it was. You know, go ahead.
I've lived here on and off, 70s, 80s, since roughly 92 again. And I've seen the town change. And one thing I've seen is the shops, until Grove Properties took it over, struggled to have good tenants. People would move out. And right now, the, the shops are disincentivized, am I pronouncing it right? To build improvements to the shops by, by increasing the size of the shops. They have an incentive to fix up the rest of the shops and make it more attractive for the shops that are there to stay, not to close. And if it turns out that it is a bit of a destination for people from Greenfield, that's good for the different shop members. I own a business in town and if an additional 25 or 50 people came into my shop, that would be great. And that's going to ensure that you're going to get the best shops for people in Long Meadow to go to, as opposed to having vacant shops that aren't filled.
I don't know of any vacant shops and I, I know the people in town are well able to go anywhere they want and they stay here and they support those shops. You keep, you keep pressing and pressing and, you know, it's got to change. It's got to change. I say, lock it down when you can and that's it. You know, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes? Let's just say it, no.
Paul Santanilla at 179 Edgewood Avenue, a member of the select board. I wanted to talk because I spoke against it at the, at the town meeting and first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And to your point, Mr. Holland, we have no say on what are good or not good shops because when Ann Taylor moved out, offices were put in. And the one thing I think that gets confused a lot is, and I want to ask some questions if you don't mind, that design that's up on the screen right now, does your vote, is your baron of your vote or does that have any baron on your vote, meaning because it would be potentially CVS, J.Crew and something else, or is it just to change the plot of land to commercial? So if there, if there were just blanks up there and we weren't talking about CVS and the drive-through and the sick kids and everything, does it, does that make a difference on, on the vote more or less, or is it just the parcel?
It does to some extent. The improvement on the parking, the traffic flow, making the entrances and exits safer. I think that, that did help in our voting. Originally, the planning board didn't like what Grove Properties proposed because of the lack of parking spaces. We thought there'd be a concern. And so, yes, that did help us in our decision.
Okay. So the, the question I have then is, there's, there's several. One is, when we talk about expansion to park, and I think that's good and I commend the folks that came back to the select board meeting on Monday night and they showed the increase in the parking, but I, you know, one of the things I'd like to share with you is I went to our planning director, Paul Healy. And last year, you know, the amount of snow that we had and sports fields weren't open and so forth, that whole parking lot to the left was negated because of the, the snow that was plowed over there. And I asked Mr. Healy, is there anything that we can do because it shrinks the parking lot tremendously? And he said, no. So one of the things is that if this does pass, that I would like to ask you to consider is that if there were, if this were to pass and this would be the, the map, so to speak, that snow and ice not be, the parking spaces not be used for snow and ice removal. Because I think it was significant last year, the number of spots that were actually taken away from public parking, most of that west side was, was filled with snow.
It's true, Paul. And most good retail facilities similar to this do actually come in with dump trucks and bucket loaders and they remove the snow. It's common business sense. I don't know why they didn't.
And I understand your process with, you know, site, a zoning change and then site and design review. My concern with that, and I know that's the process, but my concern is the cart and the horse and, and that type of thing. Because I can tell you that, or at least my perception is, when we went through the negotiations with MGM, and we can do all the traffic studies in the world and we did. And we had ours, they had theirs, and boy, did things really change. And opinions slightly differed at that point in time as to what, what type of trips would happen. And I'm being very sarcastic. We had a zone that was, you know, first we were in the eight-mile zone of, or three-mile zone of MGM and miraculously, that disappeared. And so things like that do have a way of not necessarily coming together for the benefit of us, so to speak. But I know that if we talked to CVS and said, hey, we're, you, what does the average 13,000 square foot CVS generate in traffic? And my concern about this project is, parking's one thing, but I don't have control over the parking lot. And you do to some degree when you approve this, for example, or under site and design. But it's the flow of traffic. We know that there's going to be four stores that are built, a brand-new CVS that's going to go from a peanut-sized to a giant shell, okay? So I would have to imagine that the folks at CVS aren't going to pay much, much more rent unless it's going, unless they know it's going to generate a lot more additional traffic. I know the other two stores coming in and the other store that's going to replace the CVS aren't coming in unless they believe they can generate the traffic. And I know it's all.
Actually, I, I would assume it's more, not so much, traffic may be part of it, but I would assume it's more, generate more sales, which isn't necessarily the same as.
Well, that's the same term. You mean traffic, you mean.
Traffic and sales.
Traffic means people's minds.
Well, if they're stocking or if they're selling far more items than they're currently selling, which would be the point of a larger store, if one customer may, well, just to pull out ridiculous numbers, one customer might spend $100 as opposed to $10, but it's still one customer, you know? So it's not necessarily that you're going to have 50 more people coming in to buy a box of rubber bands or something.
Actually, that's, that's my point. I think, I think that is the point.
Okay.
Is when you go into a CVS that then sells lawn furniture and groceries and you're not just going, you know, there's one thing to drive around for prescriptions.
Right.
I, I've used the one in Springfield on Sumner Avenue because ours were closed at that hour or something, right? So I've used that once. And I know that it could be a benefit to people with sick kids and I get that. But my point is, most of the traffic that's going to go to CVS is not going to be drive-through.
Correct.
And you don't go from 2,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet to 13,000 square feet anticipating the same amount of people coming into your store. I, I, I've been around enough to know that that's not going to be the case. And I'm not, these guys are the experts, not me. But when you bring in four additional stores in, because the old CVS going to the new one is really a new store to me, you're bringing four additional stores. My concern, and my, and I said it from the beginning, is the traffic is just going to generate on that road. Is it 200 cars an hour? Is it 500 cars an hour? Is it 100 cars an hour? And I know the traffic study comes after, but once it comes after, and I know, Walt, you explained it at a town meeting, you're going to be able to say, okay, it's one store there, not three. And then we're going to get sued. But that's a different, but I was, but I was saying, you, I know that's where it comes in afterwards.
Yeah.
And that's my biggest concern is I would like to have a feel, at least a potential feel of what's the amount of traffic we would anticipate coming in on an hourly basis over there. And because, you know, J.Crew isn't going to be open up at 7:30 in the morning when you're dropping your kids off at, you know, Blueberry or the high school, I would think there would be less of that. CVS, maybe there's some traffic, early morning stuff. But I would just like to have a better feel of that. That would make me feel better. Is that project going to do more harm than good to the town? Is it going to generate so much traffic, more traffic over there? And again, I know there's no lease assigned, but if we're going to imagine and tell a story of the sick moms, their moms driving their sick kids to get the drive, then we better have a story. We can then make up a story of what the trip generator is for that, for those sick moms and the elderly and so forth. So we can't have the, you can't have it one way and then not the other. So if we're going to tell that story, that it is going to be potentially J.Crew. And quite frankly, my decision on this is not the viability and healthiness of the shops. It's not the, the ability to go to a bigger CVS. It's what does it do to the effects of the townspeople?
Right.
Okay? So I'm looking at it as, what's the flow of that traffic and how's it going to affect us on a daily basis? And that, I think, and I know at site and design, you talked to the public safety officials.
Paul, there's one, there's also an unknown out there that, you know, I should point out, and that is, any moment now, Big Y is going to be in front of this board and they're going to put in a super big Y. And that does concern me because the model I look at now is, is East Long Meadow, is the, the shops in the center of East Long Meadow. And there, there's a Walgreens there, very similar idea. You've got restaurants, shops. In fact, you have the whole municipal facility there and the town library. Actually, because I correspond with, you know, the planning board in East Long Meadow and I know a lot of their members, the, the problem there is actually, is school time, it's, it's the, it's the school dismissal in the afternoon. It becomes a traffic congestion problem because the morning isn't a problem, the stores aren't open yet and the traffic, you know, school started earlier. And they have that horrible centered rotary. But what they don't have is a supermarket. And I'm thinking there's where you're, that's a huge, you know, problem where you've got turnover. I mean, people can go to the Big Y to buy one item or shop there for two hours and it is a constant. Now, if they're going to expand that place and, you know, triple the size, I know it's coming. Hate to say that, but it's inevitable. I mean, I think, I know, I think Mo Fieldstein is going to probably give up soon and they would like to kick, you know, move out. So that is a problem. And that's something, if, if Steve Walker and the Grove Properties have that expansion and then six months after that, we suddenly have the Big Y expansion, now you really do, I think that is a serious traffic problem that will be hard.
Any other thing, folks?
Although, although Big Y would then have, or anybody's, assuming this was approved.
Right.
If somebody comes. If somebody comes in afterwards, they're, obviously, they're going to have to deal with the situation that exists at that point, and conceivably, the town could feel that Big Y can't expand, because it would create too much stress in the area.
Okay.
Perhaps the Planning Board could work with the Select Board, should Big Y come before us, to talk about what can be instituted to slow down the traffic, maybe speed bumps.
Raise their prices.
Something along those lines.
They already do.
So I would suggest that that would be a good approach.
And my larger concern, quite frankly, and you said to Walter, like, you know, you wouldn't vote for the church to turn into commercial.
Definitely not.
But I think what we just saw was, 200 signatures will get you on a town meeting, and it could go commercial. And, you know, and that would then go beyond what your role is, in a sense of, you know, voting for it or against it, and that kind of thing. And, you know, there is, I just know that, when the zone change comes, comes the site and design, comes the traffic. And like I said, I think you guys, and you traveled through town during the day. My office is on Converse Street. When you go down, there's times you go down at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, down from Frank Smith to Kinder Care, and the traffic will be backed up to Revere, I believe it is. Although, you almost backed down to Frank Smith, maybe it's not Revere. And same thing with school pickup is, at Blueberry Hill. You're out, the cars are out almost halfway through the ballfields. It's just, I just don't want to see a nightmare created. Again, if it's practical, that's fine. But the traffic study comes after the fact, and that's my concern. There really is. And I, you know, you guys are going to vote, and you're, I'm not here to sway your vote. I think that, you know, Mr. Gold stated that if you voted against it, it can't come back for two years. I don't know what that does or doesn't do, other than, you know, you just don't have it on the foraging issue on it. But the reality is, you know, the choice is, you know, do you add something without knowing what it's really going to add to the town, or detract from the town? Because it's going to add something, but it's going to add a destination, but in certain terms, if you like J.Crew, and I've never been in one, so I couldn't tell you what's in there. And so I don't know what the third store would be, but it's probably something I don't shop in either. But my point is that, when it comes, it comes, and I, and my concern as a resident is really, as a Select Board member, is really, is there, what's the negatives that are associated with it? And again, that's all part of the process, I understand. So, but thank you for your time. I appreciate your.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah. Let's see, are there any, yes? Actually, just, excuse me, just, you can speak, I just want to, since you've already spoken once, is there anybody else who hadn't spoken who'd like to speak? Okay.
Again, I'm Jim Moran, 48 Avondale Road. One of the things that we're actually talking about here is increasing the amount of commercial property in our town. And, you know, one thing that I hear is a real big plus is the tax revenue that we're going to gain from the expansion of the shops into that area. Somewhere in the neighborhood of $80,000 to $90,000 per year. That, to me, doesn't sound like very much, and it really isn't very much. Mr. Nollet previously said, that's what we need to do in our town, and, you know, it's, you know, taxpayer relief and other things. And when we have, when we raise $45 million, or something like that, $43 million through property taxes, $80,000 is not a reason to expand our commercial property in town.
Actually, it's 100, I think it's 120,000 now, with the new change.
Okay. Well, 120,000 on 43 million dollars.
Point that out.
Sounds like a big number, but when put by itself. So I look at this as terms of what we're looking to do here, is we're really looking to make a zone change.
Right.
All right? A commercial zone change, and as Walter said before, it's forever, all right? So at some point in time.
Well, it's, I should know, it's forever unless someone, I mean, again.
Changes the factor residential?
Or agriculture, yeah.
You know, it's.
Not likely.
Get 200 signatures, and you can.
It's never happened, and statistically, in the Commonwealth, there's no.
So I would just like, you know, to put that on the table, in terms of, it's more than, it's a great site and design program, and there's lots of things going on here, but a lot of other complications that enter into here. And the value to taxpayers, you know, in our town, our town is 95% residential, 97% residential, so.
But it does, Jim, it does generate a lot of jobs. I mean, you can criticize Bay Path as a nonprofit, and they don't pay taxes, but it also has created a lot of jobs that people live in Long Meadow.
I wasn't counting, they don't pay very, they don't pay property taxes.
They pay no property taxes, but they generate a huge amount of people, employees, that actually pay employment taxes, that pay property taxes on their homes and live in Long Meadow. The shops do generate, I know several employees that live in Long Meadow that actually work at the Long Meadow shops. So that's what you look at. If you ask your politicians, what they're looking for is economic generation. That's what they look for, is commercial. It's the one thing, actually, the Long Meadow lacks, is that we don't generate anything that creates jobs, more jobs within our own town. I mean, we are, and that's our problem. We're a hub. That's exactly what we're described as. People wheel out, we're a bedroom community. And that's where all the traffic.
A lot of us like that. I mean, that's part of it.
And that's the nature of the town. We can't change that forever. I mean, that's the way it is, but.
And, you know, and like I say, this is just a small piece, doesn't do much toward changing that, you know, that.
Exactly.
Appearance of our town. So it's, really, I'd like to make it, you know, and I think a lot of people are misled, well, we need tax revenue from any source we can get. It's just a drop in the bucket. It's not really a reason.
I've never seen.
It's not a real reason to change this to commercial zone.
No.
Unless it was really good on a holistic basis, in terms of our town. And I talked about the traffic, and I won't say anymore, but I see it changing the complexity of our town.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, unless there's someone else with an urge to talk. Okay, at this point, I'm going to, let's see, I guess at 8:36, I will close the public hearing on the zone change. And the, at this point, the town will, town, excuse me, the board will go into its regularly scheduled meeting tonight. The, let's see, at this point, just, well, there are no announcements to be made, we have no correspondence, or.
Or minutes.
Or, or, I believe, we, actually, have we approved the, our last, the minutes from October 29?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, fine. Okay. Then, I guess the next, or pretty much the only item on our agenda, would be the voting on the proposed zone change. So, does anyone?
Well, you can, if you want to make a motion to vote, something like.
Okay, well.
Or you can carry it on to another meeting.
Well, except we're not scheduled to have a meeting before the public hearing.
No, we're not.
No. So, okay, well, then, I guess I will make a motion to approve the zone change for the parcel on the adjacent and east of the Long Meadow shops. Or second, okay. So now, we're, the question is open for discussion. Yes, Don?
I think Mr. Santanillo raised some very good points. And one of the concerns that the board has had since day one is parking and traffic flow. And that's something that we won't know the answer to until we get some studies, and I don't think we want to get the study that MGM, the people that MGM used. We'd want to, you know, talk to the Select Board and see who they use, maybe get someone. Because it's going to be, someone, it's very difficult to ascertain. My first degree is statistics. And in this instance, if I was doing a survey, I wouldn't have any data. Now, how do you ascertain, you know, what the traffic flow is going to be like? Because there's so many factors involved. We're not going to know for sure, but I think we can get a ballpark figure. You know, it might be, might be off by 50%, but we can hire someone. I think that's going to be my major concern when it comes to site, site review, is going to be the traffic flow. And if the traffic flow is okay, I wouldn't have any problem voting, you know, for the design and site review also. And I think we need to get to that point in order to figure out whether it's a viable project. And so, in terms of, in terms of voting for moving this from resident, the zoning from residential to business, I'm in favor of it, but I don't know if I'm going to be in favor of the final project, and that's pending the traffic flow studies.
Right. Well, of course, as with all site and design review, where the board feels traffic is an issue, and certainly on this, traffic is an issue, the board hires, actually, I'm not sure we've done it since you've been on the board, but the board hires a traffic engineer, so it's an independent study. And then, as part of the site and design review process, the cost of the traffic study is borne by the petitioner. As I said, the board can certainly, if this comes in front of us for site and design review, the board can certainly discuss this, and I'm sure we will. My, just initial thought, we've used different traffic engineers in the past, some from Connecticut, some from other parts of Massachusetts, and so forth. In part, because they're involved with many of the issues that are raised by this, again, it may make sense to use the PVPC. They've certainly been involved with the casino question, and, but again, the board can discuss this and decide to hire whoever we want. But again, they'll certainly be an independent, the study will certainly be independent. The petitioner, of course, if they wish, is certainly free to commission their own traffic study and present it to us as well, but that's their choice, but certainly, the board wouldn't be accepting the petitioner's study, as the study we'd be relying on. And I do think there are, from, let's say, from other, I guess somebody said how many, I forgot how many, but.
1700.
Tens of thousands, at least, of CVSs around the country, many of which, I'm sure, are similar to this proposed one. And there certainly would be information from the other ones as to how many trips are usually generated by that type of thing, which, though, I mean, I couldn't pull it out of thin air, but I'm sure a professional traffic engineer could. And, I mean, even if they simply have to say, well, if there's a, if there's a 10 or 20% increase in traffic from the apartments or the condos, then this will be the number. You know, again, there are ways of looking into it. Clearly, traffic is probably the major issue with this proposed project. I might add, just speaking for myself, if the petitioner hadn't come up with the extra 100, or whatever the number was, parking spaces, I would have voted against, or would have recommended against it. And from comments that were being made by other members of the board in the fall, I suspect that the board, as a body, would have probably recommended against it. So clearly, this is something that we're all very concerned about, and we'll have to grasp before approving any project. I'm sorry, does anybody else like?
I know, earlier, Mr. Santanillo had asked if part of what made us for or against this project was this current design that we're looking at here, as it's not set in stone. And for me, part of that current design is, and that's the part of having, whether it's CVS or Walgreens, just having a pharmacy in town with a drive-through, I think, is, as mentioned before, a public health benefit to the community. And, you know, I am the mom with two small children under five, as are many, many of the people in town, along with the elderly. Recently, I was that mom, two days before the holidays, in this parking lot with my husband at work, dragging my two kids in the CVS with about 10 elderly people standing around me for 15 minutes. I'm sure my kids contaminated those people, and there was just really nothing I could do about it in that situation. I apologized to those poor people standing in line to me, but, you know, I had to go in CVS, and I had my two children. And even the other CVS in town isn't a good option, that's not an option, too. So for me, the current placement of the CVS does not work without a drive-through, it's a traffic nightmare in front of it, too. I'm often parking in the back. And they can't change that. They can't, without rezoning this, they can't just stick it on the end where the bank is. I mean, there is no other way to fix that. So for me, if this passes, and they're back in front of me, and they say, there's no drive-through, there's no, that's not a pharmacy anymore, then I would have a big problem with that. And that would, you know, make me not want to approve, I mean, whether it's a J.Crew or another store, I mean, I don't, I would shop at J.Crew, but I wouldn't be like, oh, I'm excited. But I think, you know, that is, just in this day and age, with the sicknesses that are out there, and we do, I mean, I think most of the community is young parents with kids and elderly, it's a large portion of the population, and it's just a ticking time bomb that we can, we can fix, and we can change. And that's an important thing for me.
Anybody else?
I'll speak.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was gonna, okay. First of all, I was actually relieved when the town vote came through and said that, you know, that the shops had been, you know, shot down by two votes. I'm like, fine, so the voters have decided. And if I recall, I didn't, they had the recount, and I said, to hell with it. I've said the town has decided, this is a done deal. So to anybody who thinks that, you know, I'm in the pocket of the Long Meadow shops, I can take it or leave it. I grew up in this town, I mean, I've been here since 1961, and I remember when, you know, it was a dirt road out toward, you know, William Street. Yeah, and Wolf Swamp Road was a dirt road, and I liked Long Meadow like that. And now it's changed, it's changed, it's grown, it's developed. Apparently, a lot of people now, you know, want these kinds of services and amenities, and these are the kind of people that, if they want them, they should come out and vote at town meeting. I'll probably vote for this, and I'll say, to address a couple of the issues, I'm going to be the devil's advocate here. One is regarding, you know, this thing coming up and up again, if the Planning Board votes tonight to approve this, I'll be on the record. It still has to come back to the Planning Board. If this thing goes beyond 65 days, and Long Meadow shops, this gets shot down at town meeting on February 3, and it comes back again, you know, probably not in May, but let's say in the fall town meeting, we have to have a Planning Board hearing again, I will not vote to recommend this. I will, this is the one-time shot. I will go on the record for that. I'm actually considering running for reelection this year, and I will not continue to propose the Long Meadow shops keep going forward, if the voters say no, it's a done deal. The other thing I want to throw out to the public here is, we have control of a commercial project. So let's say it does get shot down, and Long Meadow shops sells that whole thing to Bay Path. Bay Path University buys the Christian Science Church. Welcome to the Dover Amendment. Now you've got a project that has limited control of zoning by a Planning Board or a zoning board of appeals. You've got a project that could go in, it could be the same size as the new Philip Ryan Graduate Center on East Long Meadow, it could go right there. Traffic, worse. And we can, we can control, we can have studies, but as what happened with the Long Meadow High School and the Dover Amendment, Planning Board was politely asked, and I was chairman then, to butt out of the traffic study. If anybody wants to see a copy of that traffic study, the traffic, the engineers that studied Long Meadow High School were extremely on the nose. In fact, every problem they predicted is exactly what happened, and we had to do damage control when the high school opened last year, and we had to put in all these weird one-way streets and everything, because there was no Planning Board process involved. It was, here's the traffic study, here's the plan, we were told to just waive site and design review and let it go forward. So these are, my concern is, I think, I'd rather have your elected officials have control of a project like this, than have him say, okay, I bow out, and he's going to sell it to the highest bidder, and I can only assure you who it's going to be, who's going to buy that property. And that could, you know, hamstring us. It's going to, something's going to happen there. It's not, if everybody dreams it's going to be an empty lot, then take a look at Eastham Road, which is, you know, off of William Street. For years, everybody thought who lived on Thelmoth Road, that was a vacant lot, and it turned into a mess. And now it's a subdivision. So I just think that, you know, if people don't want to vote it, fine, but it is the possibility that, you know, Steve Walker and the Grove Properties will have to, you know, remove that property and sell it at some point, and we don't know who the buyer who the buyer could be down the road. And especially with the Christian Science Church for sale, it concerns me personally that, I think we have more control now with what he's proposing than if it runs out of control with another buyer. So that's my point here tonight.
Are there any other comments?
I call the question.
Okay, well, make a motion for.
We already made the motion.
You made a motion, it was a second, and he calls.
Well, I thought, my motion was to discuss it, but I thought, but no.
No, actually, you voted to.
Oh, okay, fine. So you're, okay, then, is everyone in favor of having a vote at this point?
Yes, he's called, he can't, it's not.
Okay, all those in favor of recommending the proposed zoning change for this parcel from residential to business, I just raised their hand. Okay, well, Carrie's five to nothing. Okay, I guess that's basically about it for, actually, that's the last thing on our agenda. Does anybody else have anything they want to discuss?